Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 18th meeting of the Oregon Board of Education. We apologize, we had a bit of a technical difficulty getting on to be livestreamed. So, thank you for your patience, and we will have the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to-
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God,
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we hear the roll call, Mrs. Ruth?
Yes, Mr. Shea.
Present.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Molnar.
Here.
And Mr. Zavisky.
Okay, to start, I need a motion to adopt the agenda with the addendum to the consent agenda in consideration of certified and classified staff. Now you have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second? Discussion? Roll call?
Hey.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar.
Yes. No staff and community recognition this evening. Public participation, Mr. Gregory, do you have any emails to share?
I do not.
Okay, we'll move on to the treasures report.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Molnar. Briefly, everybody has the reports up in the Google Docs. Just briefly, overall revenue is actually down about 6.8%. Much of that is due to advances. Last year, we had about 250,000 more advances in July than we did this year. Foundations remaining low just from we're getting what we were receiving at the end of the year last year, and obviously, that will be adjusted. And beyond that, there, we do look, we did get a late payment on the flip side for additional income. We did get a late payment on the Blackman revenue through the state. So, those are hard to time. So, that accounts for the 6.8% reduction. Expenses are up by 33.8%, but we don't need to panic yet because July 20th was a three-pay month, and last year it was in August. So, that's the majority of it. We also, on a positive note, we did receive a one-time credit from Aetna, which offset some of our insurance expenses. Community, school, and open enrollment deductions were down a little bit, and then some of our capital outlay looks a little higher this year, but this includes the amount that we paid, the 50,000 that was paid to the city to help with the baseball fields upgrades. And that wasn't paid till later in the year. Last year, there were some computers were purchased for the career tech area and desks in several of the buildings. So, that's the majority of the increase. Just a couple miscellaneous items. We're going to be doing some training. I'm kind of excited about this for pass for the secretaries. It's a new receipt process if we ever get people in the buildings again where they will have a, almost like a teller situation on their screen where they'll have a really nice reconciling, and it'll be the, a posting can be automatic then once we review it. So, I'm excited about that, kind of get us in the 21st century here. So, unless there are questions, other things going on, obviously, but unless there are questions, that is my report for the evening.
Game, what's the Aetna credit for? The one-time Aetna credit?
It's for renewal. It was a credit for renewal.
For what for? I mean-
It was to, it was to improve the pricing for the renewal. I believe $297,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the treasures report, please?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so I'm getting Jeff and Keith.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Further discussion?
Oh, sorry.
Roll call?
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar.
Yes. Okay, any need for an executive session? I have none. Anyone else? Okay, moving to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, I need a motion to vote on it, please?
Don't move.
Second? Mrs. Miller?
Okay.
Roll call?
All right, Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar.
Yes. Okay, moving on to new business. We have a resolution to accept our school bus stops for the 2021 school year when we start to use, start to use them. And it goes to the administrative code 33018313. Now you have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, quick question, Dean. How are you supposed to read that thing? If I tried to figure out about a half an hour which one my kids were under, I had no clue how to figure that out. Is it just more from administrative level, not something that you should really be able to target down to an individual house?
Yes, I think the best way to read it is if you have a question, call Terry. That's the, that's the best way to do it, really.
Okay.
Roll call?
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
There's Zavisky.
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar.
Yes. Okay, item B under new business is donations. We need a motion to approve the following donations. 3,500 masks from the Bureau of Workers Compensation and 20 thermometers from the Mercy's Foundation. And we're very grateful for those two things. May I give a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar.
Yes. Item C under new business is the transportation contracts. These are mandated by the state. I need a motion to enter into transportation contracts with the Oryx family, the Marciniac family, and the Rice family. Now you have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second? Mrs. Miller? Discussion? Roll call?
Hey.
Yes.
And Mrs. Miller. Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar.
Yes. Okay, that concludes new business. We'll move to the superintendent's report, please.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Molnar. I sent it out in an email, and it's also in the Google Doc if you don't have it in front of you, but just kind of go through kind of what we're experiencing right now. Every day is a unique and different day lately. So, this is just a point in time. So, we did though start with our teachers back last Friday and yesterday specifically with training with our staff, and we had the Focus 3, Tim Kite, join us yesterday who we had planned for well over a year, year and a half to come be our keynote speaker on opening day. Obviously, with, with, with the COVID and all that, we, we set it up remotely. So, Tim Kite joined us yesterday in the morning and gave two hours of just an overwhelmingly positive, informative, motivating, all those types of words to our staff. Great response. So, we were very fortunate to have him really talking about how to handle situations. You know, how do we handle difficult situations? Do we handle those things in an emotional way, or do we handle those things in a disciplined way? And his message is that, you know, virtually any kind of event that comes your way, you can't really control. But what you can control is your response to those events, and that's really the theme around his, his message. He joined us again today for just a short time, but the one tough thing that's going on in his life is he is battling a cancer, and he had a little bit of a, you know, episode this morning where he just didn't feel real well. So, we ended the training a bit early, but, but obviously, we will follow up with him and make sure he's doing okay. But I'll tell you, his message is, is powerful, and our staff heard something that is very, I don't want to say this, it can be very personally impactful and life-altering if you take his message to heart. Our teachers then went on to work and have in-services on a number of areas, leading us to have a better start to the year remotely. So, I know Mrs. Shavoni and Mrs. Conko have been working very hard along with Mrs. Hook, talking about our updated evaluation system. Just a lot of moving parts going on right now and throughout the week. So, all in all, teachers are getting ready to work with our kids next week, and we'll be ready as best we can. We are starting device distribution this week. So, you'll see that tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, based on which school you're at. I believe Clay is doing it three different days, signing up. Facet and Eisenhower, I believe, are Thursday. And so, they'll have just kind of a long day where you sign up and come pick up your device. So, hopefully, that will go smoothly. I have no, no doubt that it will. And they'll also be passing out, you know, if they do have some handbooks or other materials on that same time. Moving towards what's going on, obviously, with the whole COVID situation, schools, athletics, all those types of things. Obviously, today was, was a, a big day. The governor came out and announced some information on sports, contact and non-contact. And if you didn't hear, which you probably have, the governor did allow or is planning to allow contact sports to move forward as early as this Friday with scrimmages. So, the health order is coming out tomorrow. So, we'll get the details tomorrow. But in his two o'clock press conference, and then in a, another Zoom meeting that, that we held at four o'clock with superintendents around, he reiterated the fact that he wants our kids to have the opportunity to play. But that opportunity to play comes with some responsibility, and he emphasized the idea of responsibility and what we need to do as school district leaders, ADs, coaches, and all that to make it happen. So, right now, the plan is to have a six-game schedule in our track league beginning in two weeks. In two weeks, on the 28th, we would host our first home game versus Fremont. The number of participants will be limited to just a few per kid. In other words, we're not sure the exact amount. I think I put in my report that it's two tickets per student, but I also heard it could be up to four tickets per student. But it's not going to be open to the general public. It's only, participants will only be those connected to the students, the student athletes, the band, the cheerleaders, any student that's participating in the football games or soccer games or any of the contests. It's just the immediate family members or loved ones or special people. So, we're obviously going to read through that health order tomorrow and digest it a little bit and see what that means for, for our situation. We're well on our way to planning how we can six-feet distance. Masks will be required by everyone. So, anyone that plans to attend a game, soccer, volleyball, football, anything, masks are absolutely mandatory. He was not hesitating one bit on those masks and six-foot distancing. So, we're going to work through that, you know. We're planning on going. I know our, all teams in our league are planning on going as of today, from what I'm being told. So, you know, we're going to do bands, going to look a bit, a bit different. So, I think first week's going to be maybe a smaller version of the band, and as kids get more acclimated, you know, the next couple of games that they're allowed to play in that, you know, it'll be expanded a bit, but that's okay. We're getting the kids out. We're going to give the kids the opportunity to play and experience something on a Friday night. So, again-
Before we move on, when you talk about attendance, you talked specifically football. What about the other sports? I'll say, you know, even the non, non-contact cross-country, is attendance wide open?
You know, he did not go into that specifically, and I'm, I'm, I'm wondering what cross-country will look like. I'm wondering what, you know, golf and tennis are a little bit different because you don't get a lot of spectator sports at those anyhow.
Well, those two have been going on, so I assume they've seen them. They've been spaced out, but cross-country hasn't started.
Yeah. I'm imagining that it's going to be the same parameters for cross-country as it is for football. Again, it's not a, it's not a confined stadium, obviously, or a confined space. He did say there will be a little bit more limits put on indoors. So, I don't know if there'll be a specific, for example, volleyball. Obviously, there's less kids playing in a volleyball game than in a football or soccer game. But those same mandates will be. So, I'll know more tomorrow. I will certainly pass that on of what those parameters are, and you know, we'll all see it. But he didn't mention cross-country today. It was pretty much focused on those contact sports.
Okay. Then how will the, when we decide or those, the students get their tickets to pass out? How, when can the parents expect either email or post, social media post on when that's going to happen, and you know, if they're going to go to their kids, if they have to pick them up or something?
Yeah, we've already preliminary talked about it. I mean, right now, the, the goal is that they'll go on our online system and essentially, you know, make a reservation for their particular family, right? So, they'll purchase tickets. They will make, you know, purchase tickets, make a reservation online. So, we know exactly who's coming, and they'll be able to, my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Ruth, is that they'll be able to kind of look at a map of the stadium and know, okay, I want my tickets there. So, I'm going to pick these two seats or those four seats.
And much like a professional game, there will be only, there'll be no tickets sold at the gate at all. Everything will be pretty much maybe on your phone, or if you've printed something out. But I, that's what originally my market said, that there'll be no tickets sold at the game.
The idea would be is you'd bring your phone, or you'd bring a piece of paper with printout, and we would have an iPad, and you'd scan it and go on in.
Yeah.
So, how they, how we auditing the, who makes the ticket reservation that it's specific to the student or the band or concession and stuff like that?
I would imagine that Mark will have a way of putting, inputting it in the system. We haven't talked about it yet. This is all real new, but I, there are all kinds of parameters that could be put on. It'll be interesting. He'll probably give the away team so many tickets, and then they'll be responsible for making sure it's just family members. But yeah, this will be very different. I haven't gotten that far yet.
And just to clarify, the, the governor, you know, although he talked about family members, we're not going to police whether it's family members or not, right?
If you got-
The idea is that kids need to be supported by people that, that love them and care for them and want to come see them. So, if it happens to be two friends, or, you know, an aunt and an uncle, or a grandpa and a grandma, or, or a neighbor and somebody, that's, I mean, that's okay. The idea is going to be, though, we're going to have to limit tickets to connections to the kids and the numbers of the kids.
So, you're going more with a stadium capacity limit than a strict two per kid or something like that?
No, we're going to count the number of athletes we have times a number, and that, that will be the number of tickets we have. And to define that number, we'll find out a little bit more tomorrow, but I'm imagining it's going to stay up to four because the governor mentioned that in my four o'clock.
Plus the band, though, and that's a even bigger group of kids, isn't it?
Yeah. I'm not saying we'll be able to do four. We will, we will obviously have to do a count, you know, of 55 football players roughly. You know, maybe 20 cheerleaders and another 130 band members. So, take that number and multiply it times us, and then we'd have to get that same amount of whatever the number. I think there's going to be a maximum of 60 football players allowed. So, we'll know what the visitors' teams maximum would be that they bring. They're not bringing visitors' bands. So, I'm imagining it's going to be football players and cheerleaders, or at a soccer game, you know, the soccer players probably exclusively. And then, you know, so I think we'll be fine. Our stadium holds up to 4,000 and some people. I mean, I feel comfortable. The, the harder part's going to be, we must have a compliance individual. It's a mandate. So, we have to put one or more people in charge of making sure our fans, our parents, our friends are complying with the masks, are complying with social distancing. So, just to let all the public know, that is a piece of this whole puzzle and a mandate that's coming our way, that each school has to have that. Now, we'll do it-
Couldn't we combine that, Hal, with the officers that we're already paying to be on-site for security in the games?
I think, yeah, I think it'll be between officers and then the administrators that are there on a routine basis. Exactly. And again, we have-
It's not an added position.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, not, not exactly, not a paid position, anything like that. We just have to designate, I think, some people for that, whether it's police officers or us or whoever.
Are you talking inside the stadium or including the outside of the stadium and everyone gathering and lining and not social distancing there?
Well, we're going to have to have the police officers patrol the out, in my opinion, to patrol the outside of the stadium, and we just can't have it.
Okay.
I mean, that, that's my thought. Obviously, my, after today's announcement, one of my calls tomorrow will be with the, you know, the police and just get their take on it. Because really, before today, we weren't even sure we were going to need, you know, officers for games, and now, now we're going to need them for at least three. So, or three.
Okay, Hal, one other question. At one time, they said that we were going to have to take temperatures of all people coming in. Is that mandate still there, do you know?
He did not mention it in either meeting today.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'll know more tomorrow. If that's the case, I feel confident that we can do that. We have about 250 thermometers. I mean, so that, the, the doing isn't the problem. I guess it'd be just the people, but with the limited scope of people coming in, I think it would be doable.
Just so people coming in know that that's coming, if, if we have to do-
It is. Yep. And, and we'll get something out, obviously, to our community about our protocols for games, both, you know, for soccer, for volleyball. Again, right now, our Eagle Invitational Cross-Country Meet is still on. We have not officially canceled it. I know many of the other areas have. We were kind of in a position to wait and see because it was a little bit later in, in the, in the season. So, we, we still have to make some decisions, I think, on that. But, you know, maybe we'll be able to run it. We'll see. Okay, so I did have a call today. I just called, I call him Dr. Z, just because it's hard to pronounce him, but the Health Commissioner, and just wanted to get his take on, on, you know, what's happening, what's going on, and get a better feeling about, you know, the area in general. And he said, we're still solidly in the red, but they're starting to see just same as across the state. We're starting to see a decline in the number of cases, which is a real positive thing. He, he believes, and again, without any promises, without any commitments to me whatsoever, he believes that if we stay on track the way we are by mid-September, we could be in a whole different position. Maybe it's dropping out of red. Maybe it's a different recommendation related to schools or sports or other areas of the community that comes from the health, health department. So, I guess I'm just sharing that because it could, it could go the opposite way, too, because out of, out of one side, it's, yeah, it's going right now. But out of this other side is, we're opening up schools and colleges all right now. And the whole thing can go completely the opposite way. I just saw an article pop in that Notre Dame University just had to shut down because of about 150 cases of COVID. So, there's a university that just started a few weeks ago, now shutting down for a period of time. I think they said two weeks, and then they're going to evaluate it. So, so who knows? Again, it's, it's a very much a guessing game, but I was encouraged by the fact that he was, you know, saying some positive things, and that was echoed today by the governor across the state. But what the governor did say is the urbans are now, because they peaked, you know, a few weeks ago, the urban areas are starting to decline a bit. Again, we're not out of the red. So, Lucas County's still solidly in the red. I just want to reiterate what he told me. But it is dropping, but the rural areas are going up. So, that's because of just people letting down their guard, having more parties, doing more things socially, and it's going up in rural areas. If you watch the governor's press conference, the top 10 counties now are all rural counties, which is the first time that's happened. So, so who knows? It's an ebb and flow. It's what's happening in a moment in time. So, so again, he has a board meeting with his board next Thursday. He doesn't anticipate any specific recommended, you know, change recommend, recommending from the board, but he, you know, you never know what can happen in two weeks. So, we'll, we'll follow up and keep in touch with him. So, I just want to address briefly the, the parent gathering that we had at Clay High School last night. And so, I do appreciate everyone that came out and, and, and did it peacefully. You know, it was about a half-hour gathering. People came out and they, they, they did what they needed to do. They said what they needed to say. They did it organized and, and, and it all went, you know, very smoothly from what, what I saw. But in response to the parent gathering, I'd just like to say a couple of things that, that, that we will continue to review the state and local circumstances related to COVID, okay? As much as we want to think this is a easy decision one way or another, it's not an easy decision, and I understand that there's, trust me. You guys know as well as I do, right? We get a lot of the same emails about how people feel in our community, and it's reflected not only in our community, but in our county, in our state, and in our country, and probably the world if we travel to other countries. It is, it is something I've never quite seen ever in my lifetime. But I am recommending to the board that we continue, that we continue down the road that we're currently on and follow the plan that we're currently on. Because I believe for all our families, we need to have some level of knowing what's happening. And, and right now, we know what's happening. With that said, though, I do want us all to keep an open mind, me included, all right? To possibly looking at adapting and adjusting our plan when the timing feels right. And, and again, you know, I've put the date out there of first quarter because I believe this thing's going to go the first quarter. And I heard again from the governor today that all the experts that he has talked to nationally say that November, December, and January could get real bad. I mean, he's, I heard him say it, you know, in our meeting at four, and, and so none of us know what's going to happen for sure. But right now, it feels like trends are going down. So, I'm keeping an open mind about what, you know, the next move could be. So, I guess I'm putting out there to the board and to the community, if circumstances and recommendations change prior to the end of the first quarter, that we at least hold discussions about how and what those changes mean to our district. And the governor has been very open about saying, listen, you know, each one of the decisions that he makes impacts school districts and communities differently, right? And so, so that's my, that's my word out to the community. It's like, we listen to you, but on the other hand, I do believe we are on the right path, starting remote. I, I, I want our kids back as soon as the whole situation feels like it should be. But we, we're not there yet. And so, I just kind of wanted to put that out there. I know there's a lot of people watching tonight wondering, you know, what I was going to say, or what we might say as Board of Education. I know there's been some ideas by the, by the community put out there about surveying, you know, finding out what the community, community thinks. So, you know, that's not out of the question. We're going to kind of process those thoughts. I know other communities have done that. I've had just a couple of conversations with a few board members, but not in-depth about that. But I, you know, when, when, and when, and if we do that, we would certainly take that seriously.
Hal, I would personally, I would like to see a survey go out to the community members. I know you spoke about, we all receive a lot of the same emails. The emails that I have received personally to my OCS have been towards the majority of, of the going back full-time. So, I have not received too many emails in support of our decision of, of starting remote. I'm not advocating for us to change. That's not what I'm saying here, to change our mind. I'm simply saying that we live in a democracy. Let's put the, the paper out to the, or the link out to our public and let us know what their feelings are with 3,700 students that we oversee.
Yeah, so I, I think that's something we have to carefully think about and, and process a little bit, and what, what is it we really want to know, right? Surveying is an art. And so, so we hear you, right? And I appreciate that, Keith, and I know that came out. So, certainly, feedback to, to us is, is, is important all the time. And just to remind everyone that I am still doing a community question and answer tomorrow night with our leadership team that, that will continue to, to talk through and, and answer questions as best we can. I sent that leak out earlier today, at least through our, our parent email system. We'll get it posted out on social media here a little bit later.
When was the last time we surveyed? Was it about seven weeks ago?
Ah, it was probably around the end of April, mid-May.
Yeah, and right about the school year.
What about the teachers? When's the last time we surveyed them?
I don't know if we've ever surveyed them specifically. So, this, you know, we can certainly do, you know, do that as well. You know, one of the things that I just want everyone to understand that I'm dealing with is there's, there's many moving parts to this whole reopening piece, and, and one of those parts is, is what Mr. Kennedy- is there's, there's many moving parts to this whole reopening piece. And, and one of those parts is, is what Mr. Kennedy mentioned is our staff. And our staff is just a reflection of our, our community and, and people in general. And, and there's a lot of nervous people, lot of nervous staff about, about COVID. Um, we have already developed over fifty individualized personalized health plans for our staff to help them feel comfortable, understand what they personally have going on and, uh, working to, to accommodate those individuals in a remote situation. Now, some of those apply to, to a hybrid or all-in and some to a remote. So, so the, the question isn't as simple as just bringing kids back as, as we all know. Um, there's a lot of moving parts to all this and a lot of emotion and a lot of feelings and, and, uh, we're going to do our best. But one of the things that Tim Kite talked about is, you know, any decisions you make, you make not out of emotion, but you, you make disciplined and you look at all the data and you find out more. So a survey could certainly be a part of that. Uh, but again, I am again, not advocating to, to make any kind of stance whatsoever right at this point in time because as you know, everything changes so rapidly. Anything else on that? I know it's a big topic.
Kind of a quick question, kind of related to that, um, Hal. With the Chromebooks being distributed here in the next couple of days, they have to be registered to pick them up. How does our registration numbers in total compare to, say, the last year? Cause I know there's, you know, a lot of people are switching, I've seen people posting on social media, they're switching to private schools or open enrollment to a school that is going five days or hybrid. Have we seen a large change in our registration numbers?
Not at all. Matter of fact, our registration numbers have been solid. I mean, our, our, our total enrollment is still over thirty-five hundred and we were right around thirty-five to thirty-six hundred last year as a total. So our kindergarten numbers are around two hundred and fifteen-ish, which is what we were a couple of years ago. But again, it's, it's a little hard to judge in this COVID time because we have some kindergarteners going into the OCS Digital Academy. Um, we do have some that have chosen to just wait a year. We've had a few calls on that because they, they could based on the age requirement. So I'm not seeing the overall impact in, in our, um, our enrollment at all. Now I can get you better numbers, Jeff, so let me dig into that because it's still a, it's still a rapidly moving thing at this point in time with our kids. What I do know is, I mean, bring it up here real quick.
So, cause I know I've had a lot of people, I've sent you some information. A lot of people contacted me about open enrollment, wanting to still get into the district, uh, for various reasons. So I was.
Yeah, I mean, we, we are still having that and that's been a struggle. You know, we, we typically have a open enrollment closed, but this is such a unique situation. This year we've allowed it to remain open all summer. So now, now the question's been kind of, and, and Jeff, you and I talked about it. It's like, well, it, it was closed, but do we keep it open? There's not a law that prevents us from allowing open enrollment to remain open. I mean, there, it's more of an internal policy date kind of thing. So again, you know, I think we have a lot to offer people. Um, but I was just going to say our OCS Digital Academy numbers have shifted a little bit when we made the decision to go remote. Uh, right now, we have seventy-six students that will be attending the OCS Digital Academy, even like even in our remote, that they're choosing to go online fully without that quote, direct teacher support. Okay? So seventy-six, that's K through twelve. So, um, we have.
Reflected in the, uh, registration number?
Yeah, those are still, but those are all still reflected. I'm just kind of giving, this is another side stat. Sorry about that. We have another hundred and eight that had inquired about it that are not going to be attending, but they'll be attending here under our remote plan with teachers. And we have a sixty-three undecided. So I feel real good about those numbers. Um, I, I think that is meeting the need of, of that group, certainly. And, uh, you know, we haven't seen a spike in homeschool. We've seen some, but not a spike at all. Um, be honest with you, we're down to under a hundred, I believe, people who haven't registered. That's the best we've had in years. We've had the best re-registration results than we've had in years. I give a lot of credit that to, to Mr. Quigg and, and the folks he works down in registration with, because they've just, they've done a magnificent job. And, uh, I mean, it, it's, it's down to just a few. So real proud of that.
Do we have a plan then for those hundred people that aren't registered to get them a Chromebook or get them registered so they can get a Chromebook after this week?
Call, 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 call again, go out to their house, call. Every one of them has had a dozen or more calls, emails, reach outs, call, call, call. Some of them probably won't show up. And so those are things we don't know until, uh, others, if they come, let's say those in-person, um, pickups at the elementary and at, at, uh, at, uh, intermediate. If they are not registered and they come to pick up, we're going to have a computer ready for them. They're going to, you know, we're going to encourage them to go right over to the side and register and give them the help they need to make that happen.
Okay. Then my last question is really more for Dean, uh, back on the bus. Um, are we still sending out the bus letters now or we wait until we, uh, using the busing to have the bus letters go out by mail?
We haven't really pinned that down yet because we're still so early. Uh, there has to be letters and we're working with the, the self-contained special ed classrooms and some of the other ones that are going to be unique and starting earlier potentially. Um, but when is the best time? Is it, is it a quarter early for those bus letters? Uh, we haven't really pinned that down just yet.
Okay. Just want to make sure that people haven't gotten them, realize that we haven't sent them out and they're not missing out on anything.
Right. We've, we've definitely held them back at this point.
Dean, how long is that process? So let's say that the county comes back in mid-September and uh, lifts the, the recommendation. How long does Terry need for that transition?
She, she's ready to go right now. She has, we have everything we need right now. They could be sent out tomorrow if we got the word.
Okay. So the routes, everything's all planned through registration. It's just a matter of notifying the parents.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And then I guess one follow-up, since Dean's on here talking right now is supply-wise, I know you've been working probably since April, May to get us enough sanitizing, cleaning supplies and all that in, in store for to, to go live in-person schools. Are we, are we sitting good in that situation right now still?
We, we are. Uh, our disinfectant, we've been using the same product for over a decade and it's hospital-grade disinfectant. We have added one little piece for the, for the more rapid changeover classrooms like the high school. So it just has a, has a, a lower kill time. So it, it doesn't need to sit very long. Uh, that's the only one, but it's readily available to us and we've worked with, uh, Silverback Supply really early on. So feel very good about that. Our, our hand sanitizer is the same way. We jumped on really early and we're good throughout the whole year.
And can we're good from a maintenance staffing pinpoint to keep the buildings clean and sanitized while high and any additional we can do with our current staff?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
We've, we definitely have to, we, we had to buy a couple, um, um, oh shoot, I'm, I'm going to get it wrong. The, the, the sprayers for the custodians to give them a little, so they're not pumping it by hand. Uh, and those are, those are coming in. They're a little backordered on a couple of them. So we're working through that, but, um, we feel pretty good about the staffing.
So from an operation standpoint, when the board or house says we want to go hybrid or all-in, you're set to keep the buildings clean supply-wise and staffing-wise?
We, we are. And in fact, the, the blessing of this is while going remote, we can kind of practice this new um, protocol, this new process that we're putting in place so that we have the time to sanitize or to disinfect the, uh, the rails and the bathrooms more often. So we're working through that schedule now, but yes, we can do it.
Good. Thanks.
So again, just a, a reminder to the community that tomorrow night, uh, we'll have a community webinar, uh, Q and A at six PM. So we'll, we'll get that out and, um, you know, hopefully you can join us and, and we're, we're going to try to keep it to about an hour because we're going to change it up a little bit where uh, the leadership team will be able to answer or will answer questions that are in the question log, if you will, to help kind of speed up the process. So like, I know last time we went two hours, there was, you know, quite a few repeat questions, which was fine. Uh, but I think we can answer them a little bit quicker and, and everybody if, by those who know the answers other than me can just type it in. So hopefully we'll keep it to an hour tomorrow night, but if it goes a little over, no, no problem. So Mrs. Moner, that's, unless there's other questions, that's, that's where we're at.
Anybody else with a question? Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Okay, we're moving on to old business. We have these policies. These are all mandated. It's AFC and GCN and for evaluation of the professional staff and then face coverings. Uh, second reading, so I need a motion to adapt.
I'm moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller. Mr. Shay.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Moner.
Yes. And on to board committee reports, findings?
Yes, the, uh, finance committee did not meet this month.
Thank you. Capital improvements, health and safety.
No report.
Thank you. Policy personnel, we just adopted those policies. So that's, takes care of that. Academic. Mrs. Miller, we can't hear you.
Sorry. Uh, no report. I know that she is getting ready, obviously. Uh, Mr. Cockle getting ready to, uh, help with the roll up with Dawn with the, um, the laptop. So I know she's really busy, but we should be able to meet once things get up and rolling next week. So.
Thank you. Uh, legislative?
No report.
Student achievement. Mrs. Miller, student achievement. Okay, thank you. Okay, we are down to board discussion. Any board discussion this evening? Okay, then how about an executive session? Any need for an executive session?
Yeah, I believe there is for how to update us on a few items, uh, personnel-related.
So you are referring to, uh, the first box. Appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion. Is that fit?
Uh,
I think so.
Or, yeah, Hal.
I think it's the preparing for conducting a review and negotiations or bargaining sessions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, all right. Um, there will be no business included after that. So we will dismiss from there. Next regular meeting is September fifteenth, but there may be a special meeting that will be announced in between. Is that correct?
Yes.
Anything else from the, for the good of the board? Okay, then may I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Shay.
Yes.
Mrs. Moner.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone for listening and, um, we'll see you on the fifteenth or before.
Okay. So we'll jump onto the other, uh, link.
Okay, thank you.